Good morning, Commissioned members. My name is Hugh Bass. I am the owner of Bass and Associates. We're a real estate appraisal firm located in Carrollton. I am local. I grew up in the Centerpoint community. Most of you all know that is between Temple and Carrollton and Bremen. I grew up on a farm there. I currently live in Carrollton, but I have family members and friends who live in Harrelson County. So I do have an interest in this area, and I'd like to see this area protected and have proper and reasonable growth. In the course of my appraisal career, for about the past 37 years, I have done in excess of 50 appraisals in the Harrelson County area. These are for lenders, for attorneys, for property owners. We have done work for the City of Buchanan, for the City of Tallipusa, for the Harrelson County Board of Education, for the Bremen Board of Education. So those are some sample clients that we've had. Some of the recent appraisal assignments that you would recognize as property we appraised, we appraised the Blake House at Waco for the Harrelson County Board of Education. We appraised Southeastern Hose, the manufacturing facility in Bremen. Due to the unfortunate death of Randall Redding, we appraised the RJR Construction Company office recently. We appraised Mount Holly Church. We appraised Mountain Olympia for the City of Buchanan. We appraised Miller Funeral Home. We did a cost analysis for the City of Tallipusa for their streetscape project, which is currently underway. So that's just a sampling of some of the work that we've done in Harrelson County in the past few years. So I was engaged to do this real estate market study back in early 2020. And at the time I was engaged, my first activity was to come and meet with Ernest Kaufman and take a tour of the site. It was proposed for the landfill industrial park. So we did that. That has been my only contact with anyone from Solid Solutions officials. So in no time during my study have I been influenced or directed by any officials of Solid Solutions, one to provide a favorable or directed results. Any of the opinions and conclusions that I have are from my independent, unbiased research. So I did a two-phase study. The first was to study the subject property and its neighborhood within about two or three miles of the proposed industrial park and landfill. And then the second phase was to study real estate activity around existing operating landfills. So as I studied the first side way there, I know you've been introduced to the subject property. I know all of you all are familiar with what's around that subject property. But in doing the research and analysis, I had to become aware of what's around the subject property. I was aware of it. I've been aware of it for many, many years, except I did take a little tour around on my own of some of the roads that go into this property that I had never been on before. But I think I've been on all the roads that project into the park and go around the park, proposed park. So you know at the intersection of I-20 and Stairway 100, you know Honda Performance is over there. You know just south of the interstate is McAdams Drive, and it has, even though it's zoned, I mean, it's zoned commercial, it has industrial uses in there. So there's industry in that area. Also up on Golf Course Road is an industrial park, so you have industrial up there. So precedent has been set that, you know, industrial should be acceptable in this area. We're adjacent to the old Harrelson County landfill and the shooting range, as you've been, has been discussed. The, okay. The West Georgia Mud Park, Bogging Park is just northeast of us. The Norfolk Southern Rail Line, which I know you're all familiar with that, is a very active rail line between Atlanta and Birmingham with long trains and quite a few trains coming through each day. This property has, as had been said, a high-tension transmission power line crossing it. It's got an interstate gas line crossing it. So, and the property has abundant frontage on I-20 and some frontage on Stairway 100. You're familiar with all the development around the Interstate 20, Highway 100 area of the two truck stops, several convenience stores in that area, restaurants, a Dollar General, I believe, and a motel. So you're familiar with what's going on there. But I look at things like that, what is in the area, what have been the historic growth trends, and what has changed, what's going on at the present time. I also consider demographics and income levels, housing permits in the area. Another thing of interest to me about the subject is, of all the roads in the area, it is not served very well by roads, and it is not penetrated much by roads. You have the Pleasant Hill Church Road that comes through the south side and terminates into the subject, and then several roads coming up off Highway 78 come down and terminate into the subject. Otherwise, it's pretty isolated. As you're aware, the current zoning of that property is A1, which is agricultural. Uses allowed there would be agricultural purposes and low-density residential. It has a minimum lot size of five acres. So, and the current use of it, and the historic use of that, has been as a timber tract and some scattered low-density residential in the area. Also of importance that I considered was the Gold Creek subdivision that is in close So if we could see the next slide, please. This is the Harrelson County future land use map. And the subject again is down here at the intersection of I-20 and 100, and you see it's in the kind of the pale green, pale green color. That is indicated for the future land use map is indicated as agricultural and forest land. So if this were to be, project were to be approved, zoning would be approved, of course, that future land use map would need to be amended. And I know, I recognize that municipalities amend those periodically as needed. Next slide. This is the City of Tallipusa zoning map. Now, this property is in, of course, unincorporated Harrelson County, but it is right adjacent to the City of Tallipusa. The corps, the Tallipusa is to the northwest. The city has connectivity down to the interstate. And I'm sure you're aware, again, the Honda facility is zoned M2. That's a heavy industrial zoning. The area on Golf Course Road is M2, heavy industrial zoning. And this is commercial in here. It's got, I believe, it's kind of heavy type commercial uses. And again, the McAdams Drive, I don't know why, it's zoned C4, I believe, which is a commercial, but it's pretty much light industrial uses in there. Next slide. This is the Tallipusa Enterprise Zone. There are two zones, one up in the core area of basically the south side of downtown Tallipusa, and then down around the interstate. So enterprise zones have been designated by the state as areas that suffer from disinvestment, underdevelopment, and economic decline. Those are the criteria that a municipality would apply for to get into an enterprise zone, indicating that there's a desire to have development in that area. After becoming familiar in somewhat more detail than I was before of the neighborhood, maybe a little bit more, but I mean most of that already, the next consideration I had to make was what is the highest and best use of the subject? And about every appraisal that we ever do, highest and best use is the foundation of the appraisal. That's the first thing we go through. And there are four components to highest and best use that we consider. It is legal permissible, is it physically possible, what is financially feasible, and what is maximally productive? Legally permissible is typically controlled by zoning. On this property, legally permissible is controlled by zoning. It is also somewhat controlled by two major easements that cross the property because they control, the holder of those easements, the power company and the pipeline company, control what can be done on their land to a certain extent. Physically possible, that's just you look at the physical characteristics of the property, the streets, infrastructure, access, topography, shape of the land, size of the land, to consider what physically might be done with any tract of, this tract of land. And then we consider financially feasible, and anything that is legally permissible and physically possible that will produce a return on your investment, even if it makes you a dollar on your investment, is considered to be financially feasible. The next category is maximally productive. So of all the uses that are legally permissible, physically possible, and financially feasible, which will provide the maximum return on the investment? So that's the steps we go through for a highest and best use analysis. For the subject, there are basically four options for the highest and best use. One, you leave it as it is, retain it as an agricultural and scattered residential, low-density residential use, or you could rezone it for a more high-density residential use, or you could rezone it for a commercial use, or you could rezone it for an industrial development. And you might even rezone it for a mixed-use development where you blend some of those. But let's consider single-family residential, and is that feasible for this 2,047-acre tract of land? First off, when you look at the demographics and growth of all of Harrelson County, but particularly southwest Harrelson County, it's a rural area. It has low population base, and I'm not knocking that because that's, you know, I understand people appreciate living in rural areas. I grew up on a farm. But based on current and projected growth rates for the area, if you did a typical subdivision, say of an average of one acre lots, you'd probably create about a 75- to 100-year supply of lights. It would take a long, long time to absorb that many lights. Developers don't buy land and hold it for 75 to 100 years. A large part of the topography of the subject is not suitable for small lights because it is real hilly. Therefore, some of it should have developed into big lights, and the cost of infrastructure, putting streets in, is gotten to where it's pretty prohibitive for large light subdivisions. That's the reason you see so many new subdivisions are developed on small lights. It costs you about $400 to $500 per linear foot for your street, of your street, for all your street and infrastructure that you've got to put into a subdivision. It gets really expensive. So I, and my conclusion is there's no economically feasible or reasonably probable use of the subject as a whole for a residential development. Next option is commercial. Commercial requires, especially on 2,000 acres, would require a really heavy industrial base, excuse me, heavy residential base, and Harrelson County and southwest Harrelson County does not have the residential base to support that much commercial use. Industrial, I would say there's also inadequate demand to support 2,047 acres of industrial The other issue with industrial is industrial users generally want large level pad sites. And with all the rolling, hilly topography of this property, it would be very expensive to bring that to usable industrial grade. And the industrial market, strong industrial market just has not moved out this far yet. It may be inching its way into, from Thornton Road where all the huge, large distribution warehouses are. A few have been built in Douglasville, somewhere in Villareca, and eventually it will get out here, but still it'll be a long time before they could ever absorb 2,000 acres. So the subject has very limited and viable alternative uses, in my mind. The proposed indicator environmental industrial park is likely the only feasible, large-scale, multi-use project that can absorb and utilize the entire 2,047 acres. Again, Honda Precision parks locate on 700, excuse me, 447 acres of M2 zoned land, and in my mind, the McAdams Industrial Park supporting industrial use for this area and neighborhood, as does the frontage along I-20 and then just the access along Stairway 100. The local market for most any new developments is extremely limited. To my knowledge, other than the proposed environmental industrial park, there is no evidence of any potential development of the subject that would provide an adequate return on investment. The subject land could remain as a timber tract with future potential for only scattered rural residential uses for many years into the future, making only a marginal contribution to the overall economy of the county. The current A1 zoning severely limits the use opportunities and limits prospects for future economically viable or beneficial development. Denial of the requested zoning would prevent the property from being developed for a more feasible and economically viable use. Thus, the current zoning of the property is a significant detriment to its unrealized economic potential. That was, pretty much concludes my study of the local market area. Then I go and expect four operating landfills around the state of Georgia, in north Georgia. These were identified. I personally drove by and inspected each one. Before going to those landfills, I got on Georgia multiple listing service and the local tax assessor's websites, and identified the sales that have taken place in those areas. And I focused on sales generally from 2017 to 2020. I did this study in 2020. I know we're in 2022 now, but my study was done in 2020. So that's the reason I focused on land sales, real estate sales from 2017 up until 2020. When I gathered those sales, I printed them off. I have good, hard copies of those and files in my office. It's a thick, thick file of sales information that I have. I couldn't present all those here today by any means. So at these landfills, I drove by and observed those sales, at most all of them. There was one landfill, it's, landfill that has much activity around it, I couldn't look at all the sales, but I looked at quite a few. So...
Mr. Bass, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I just wanted to let the applicant know that they have about 10 minutes left.
Okay. Okay. The first, the first, next slide. I went to the Turkey Run landfill in Mayweather County. I found, it's on 418 acres, between 2013 and 2019, there were 17 land and house sales within one mile of that landfill. The Athens Clark County landfill, which we have right, no, that's not it. Going back up. Athens Clark County landfill, over two and a half miles outside of Athens, it's on 444 acres. It identified 64 land and house sales within 1.5 miles of the landfill. And Pine Bluff in Cherokee County, opened in 1994, it's on 960 acres, identified 45 land and house sales within 1.5 miles of that landfill. And some of these houses are $400,000 to $500,000 houses, in really close proximity. We have a time-lapse video, do we have time to do that? Of the Buford, Richland landfill in Buford. This is a time-lapse photo, a video. It's going to start off in 2021, back up to 1985, then 1999, and then it's going to come back. You can kind of follow. 1985, there's some delta land, you see Lake Vermeer, it was built, the landfill is, there's Lake Vermeer. This, within one mile of the lake, it's the landfill. It's 1,000 feet of development. It's 1,000 feet of, you have to see, up and down, it's here. It has, wow, everywhere, you can just play, play, see there. It has everything, it's a little, it's 1,500 miles, 1,400 miles of the landfill. This is 2018, we've more than that, it's nice. 2021, we've got Lake Vermeer, it's a, sale, people, I didn't say, it's right, it's on the... There are nine schools within 2.2 miles of this property, loads of residential subdivisions. These range from 130 to $400,000 houses, and some of them are within 600 feet, 500 feet of the landfill. One other quick summary I'd like to make, if I could. I had too much stuff to cover. So I looked at residential land sales in the recently, that have taken place at the subject landfill, the subject property. So residential sales within one mile, excluding the Gold Creek subdivision, from January of 2019 to May of 20, when this project was announced, there were 12 sales. This is within one mile of the subject. Between May 21 of 2020 and December of 2021, there were 10 sales, just about the same number of sales. This did not include Gold Creek subdivision. I did that separately. Residential sales between one and three miles of the subject, from January of 2019 to May of 20 of 2020, there were 40 sales. From May 21 of 2020 to December of 2021, there were 40 sales, no change in the activity. In Gold Creek, from September 2018 to May of 2020, there were seven sales. From May of 2020 to December 2021, there were seven sales. Of those seven sales each period, three of them were the same property reselling, and in all three instances, there was significant increase in price, even after the announcement of this project. So, I can just say, this market evidence indicates there were the post buffers for the indicator environmental industrial park. Residential uses, including both existing and new development in the area, will not be adversely impacted. And from this significant market evidence, I conclude the highest, best use, and most feasible, and economically productive use of the 2,047 acres is for the proposed indicator environmental industrial park. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Smith, members of the commission, Mr. Williams, Mr. McCain, Ms. Henderson, Mr. Duhbury. We thank you for your time and attention to all of this information, and all the time and attention you put to the application materials. We know there's a lot of information in there, a lot of facts, a lot of diagrams, a lot of studies. We tried to boil it down for you as much as we could to the, to the most relevant and material facts and information that you need to make your decision, and we tried to do that as well today. I'm Bob Norman. I'm an attorney, and along with Joe Fowler, who's an attorney, local attorney from Douglasville area, we have been advising Solid Solutions throughout this process from day one of the legal aspects of a project, in particular of the zoning requirements, and to make sure that all of the elements of the zoning criteria in the ordinance were, have been addressed. And we think we've achieved that objective, and we'll address some of those further. Obviously, we can't address everything in an hour and a half in, in the application materials, so we tried to focus on the most important. We are both, well, let me go ahead. One thing I need to do is submit several documents for the record of the hearing today, if I may do that very quickly. The first document is just a certified copy of the zoning ordinance. The second document is a copy of the DRI, the RDC, Northwest Georgia RDC DRI report that was alluded to earlier, and I think everybody knows that the DRI process is a process for local governments in the area, local agencies, to be aware of and consider significant development projects in the area. And that was reviewed, this project was reviewed by the RDC and those agencies, and none of those agencies had adverse comments to this project, and I think that's important for your consideration. The last thing I want to put in the record is a copy of a letter from Mr. Fowler that was in the early materials. They simply discussed as the Georgia law, this applicable to zoning decisions. And that's important because these criteria that we're going to discuss, and that you have already obviously, I'm sure, have been explained by the county attorney, and judging by the fact they're attached to the procedure, you understand the importance of those criteria, applying those criteria to the facts, not only for the commissioners to make their final decision, but for this planning commission to make your recommendation. And if I may, I'm just going to hand those to Ms. Wade for the record. I just want to talk in the rest of my time, and Mr. Jackson, could you tell me how much time?
We've got about four or five minutes.
Okay, thank you. I want to talk about the facts a little, and then talk about the criteria and how they apply to the facts. You know, facts can be stubborn things. They're still the facts even when numbers of people want to try to, want to deny them or distort them, or just decline to accept the facts or to understand the facts. The facts here are all in these materials. The facts are the size of the property, 2,047 acres, the extensive buffers, the design of the industrial park, and location, the location of the entrance road, the surrounding area, the facts of other uses in the surrounding area that are not incompatible with the project that we're proposing for this site. All of the facts you've heard today, the hydrogeology, the geology, the proximity to I-20 and Highway 100, the fact that this area is intended, at least by the City of Tallipusa, as for commercial and industrial development, to take advantage of its proximity to Interstate 20, those are all facts. And there are a lot of other facts, obviously, that you've heard and seen in the application materials. And you are, the criteria that, well, let me ask, let me add this, in contrast to those facts, there have been a lot of allegations against this facility over time that it's been public. Some have been based on misinformation, I'm sure, innocent misinformation, lack of understanding, understandable lack of understanding of the technology and the science that goes into a project like this by ordinary people. Some of it's been scare tactics, frankly, with misinformation spread by some who either oppose, just opposed to the project based on emotion or other reasons. Those are not the sort of facts that are contemplated by the ordinance and the criteria to be considered in your decision. The objective facts are the facts that underlie your decision and underlie the criteria. And, you know, it's when emotions are high like this, like they have been here, that objective facts, a fair and objective evaluation of those facts can sometimes get lost and be in jeopardy. So we, we hope and believe and trust that all of you will look at the facts, the real facts, the genuine facts that you've seen, heard today, seen in the application, and apply these criteria. The other facts are the results of all of these professional studies and the conclusions they've reached, and they've all been discussed. I'm not going to take the time to go over them again. Those are facts. In particular, the criteria, and if you go to the next, let me go to the next slide with the criteria, please. One more.
And we got about a minute left.
Okay. In particular, the Land Value Impact Report prepared by Mr. Bass, and a separate report prepared, what's called a Land Use Compatibility Report. I hope you've had a chance to look at that. There, Tom Robertson, who's both an engineer and a certified land planner, evaluated every one of these criteria. one of these criteria and addressed each criteria in detail in his report. And Tom doesn't allow me to go through each of those, but I just want to read something from his report that summarizes his evaluation as a land planner and engineer of this project. "From a land planning standpoint, the proposed site is an ideal location for developing an environmentally sound solid waste landfill and associated soil excavation operations on adjoining land ancillary to the landfill operation. The project activities will take place within a large site that will be entirely buffered. All required environmental and operating permits must be obtained prior to construction and commencement of operations. The planned rich use industrial park is a logical and favorable location for development of such an industrial park. Potential impacts to the surrounding properties associated with the waste disposal facility and the industrial park will be minimal or neutral. The project represents the highest of best use of both the proposed landfill property and the industrial park property, as you've heard Mr. Bass say as well." Thank you for, for your time today and your consideration for this application.